Morning.
Morning.
Okay, so I have an application for exemption for the hospital they replaced a vehicle that paid this.
I'll make that motion to approve that. Motor vehicle tax exemption application for community hospital for that 2025 rabid motor vehicle. Aye.
Yep, so taxes correction for Gary's Super Foods. They sold through the second March, so we accelerated the taxes. Correction number 11. Having the 2025 taxes for the 2024 levy. The amount of five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents.
You said it accelerated, how what's the amount again?
The D's six thirty twenty-two.
Yeah, yeah.
That's the one place in South Carolina shop that's even taller.
Same with my husband, yeah. He's just afraid he'll see somebody who knows.
Right.
Some people, yes.
Call your order and get those. Yeah. Pull up there.
Right to do that yet.
Do what?
I haven't done that yet. I like to look at my group and all the other national.
Alright, I'll make a motion to approve tax rule correction number 11. Gary's Super Foods in the amount of five thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-two cents.
It's just acceleration because this is the sole. March of two thousand. Alright, so there is any further discussion, I'll put the right paper that say aye.
Aye. We're already 11th of August.
Doesn't school start the after tomorrow?
Thursday.
Thursday. Yeah.
I hate it, I have to drive by Northwood.
Picture on board invitation meeting at nine twenty-four.
I'll reconvene the Board of Commissioners meeting at nine twenty-four. So first off is Crystal with distressed warrants. Collected in and collected distressed warrants.
Can you get back here?
She must have to grab her stuff there. So, I mean, we can, I, we can jump back, but this is the paperwork Millar and Associates sent out for being our floodplain manager. Basically, it's a hundred dollars per hour.
I attached some old stuff between Doug Terry and somebody about floodplain. I didn't know if that would be useful to them.
Cause... So Miller and Associates used to perform those duties for us, and then when Doug became the elected county surveyor, then he inadvertently inherited that task as well. And that's not, he doesn't, that's not really in his purview.
When Gary DeSenta worked for Millers, he was qualified to do that. But Doug isn't the one. Yes.
Problem is that a hundred dollars per hour, if we have much work done. What, what, does that need to be under contractual services in general, or does that need to be?
Well, there isn't a floodplain fund. Would that go under general or road?
I'd have to go under general.
Yeah, it'd be under general.
If you put it under general, we don't have to establish a.
Well, yeah, more than roads get washed out, so.
Well, but this isn't, this is like.
This ain't just roads.
This has nothing to do with roads. In fact, this is more to do with all of our floodplain laws is in IE zoning more so.
I'm gonna have to change it. If you're gonna put in P and T, you're gonna have to raise our budget.
Do we even go through their budget? Crawford. With Craig.
I'm not sure, but I would think it'd be easier if it was under general, so.
Yeah, that makes sense. I don't know why I was sneaking rules.
I mean, we'll talk about, we can talk about that later with Crystal, but that is one of the items. Charles, what do you think about that? It's not saying that we will utilize them, it's just saying that we have to have somebody in place, I guess. What were you gonna say?
Well, yeah, just to state the fact, you said we gotta have somebody there, yeah. Kind of like we, you know, we should have somebody there, whether they do anything or not.
Well, there's been a couple of instances where we could have used a one lane with a stringer.
So planning and zoning, yeah, we only, for contractual services, we budgeted ten thousand, we didn't use any of that last year. On contractual services.
Cause we have the balance there, it's not gonna increase taxes, we just carry forward. But I wouldn't put it there, it doesn't make any sense to me to have that on the planning and zoning committee.
You don't think so? On general. Or where?
It's easy to put a line on that one. General. Just like a whole new division, it's like. If we wanna add a line to that, all we have to do is just the three of us to agree with it, two of us.
We'll see if there's one designated for.
The contractual services, it's not really contract, but I guess it is kinda.
Yeah, consulting, you've got contractual, consulting, and professional.
Either one.
I don't know, how much do you wanna, how much is in there currently, or what do we budget for?
Um, contractual, consulting, and professional.
Hundred bucks?
Zero and fifteen, but.
You used thirteen, you used thirteen last, go around last year.
We could put it under consulting, for how many hours would you imagine?
I don't know, at a hundred bucks an hour, that'd eat up a thousand fast.
At least a thousand, yeah.
What, you think only a thousand?
He said at least.
I was gonna say.
Make it two.
Alright, Crystal. Ready? Yep.
I missed it, but I forgot it downstairs.
You alright?
Yeah. Okay. So the report, um, collected and uncollected distressed warrants. I issued fifty-nine distressed warrants for November first, in the amount of a hundred and forty-six thousand, sixty-eight, and ninety-one cents. We had forty-three collected. And sixteen returned uncollected in the amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and seventy-six.
Twenty-eight is a collected amount?
Uncollected. A hundred and eight thousand of that is one person. And whom I'm, I asked Kevin about why, a hundred and five thousand, excuse me. Why that did not get collected or levied on, and he was unsure. He did not do the process, Burton I guessed did, and he was gonna talk to Burton, but I hadn't heard back. But it is, it is the sheriff's responsibility to levy on any property that could be levied on.
There's, we're talking tractors, combines, that could profit.
I'm pretty sure those parts.
Yeah.
So, I don't know how that process on their side works, but.
What you got there, you have the total cover sheet?
I do have the total cover sheet too, but that's the, the one in particular. There are several mobile homes on here, um, there's eleven of them, and there are a few of them that before I issued distressed warrants again, that I will just ask for the taxes to be stricken. It doesn't mean that they're not owed, it just takes them, makes them so I don't have to issue a distressed warrant on them again for them. Right.
So there's gonna be new ones, new gear on the same property.
Yes, yeah, and I can only ask for ones to be stricken that have been on there for more than two years, so there are just a few of those. And so I'll be doing those at the end of October versus October. So that's about, about thirteen thousand in other personal property, and. I have two. Personal property and lease land. Mm-hmm, so eleven of the sixteen collected are mobile homes on lease land. I do have one, um, at a six thousand dollar amount, that has paid a partial payment. So I do have partial payment for that on the books, but I cannot recede it until it's completely paid. I have one mobile home that is under a finance company, that's just about, well, it's about sixteen hundred dollars. But I'm unsure why that one's not being paid. And then I have another one in, um, one that's in bankruptcy, that got turned into bankruptcy after they were issued. And one that was accelerated, personal property, because the business closed, that has also not paid, and then one is the.
Structure itself.
Is that what?
That's on the structure itself.
That is personal property.
It is.
Yes. Yeah.
What, they charge eighteen?
Interest support.
Fourteen.
So how does the sheriff go about that? I got, I don't know that process.
Well, you first have to probably find what you have equity in, like what the bank doesn't own.
Possibly.
I suppose, and then.
So they're, that, they're.
And that might be a tough one.
That might be the problem.
If there's liens on it and everything.
It can, yeah. So they can sell it anytime, we don't have to do things.
Well, we have a good way of leaving on the property.
Yeah, but I don't know how, yeah.
Probably have, you have to file through to get it approved by the judge.
So, and I haven't been through the, thankfully, I've not come through the levy process, so.
First one's definitely not, probably got first chance. Uh-huh, they do that, or.
Probably.
Do I get this later?
Yeah, you can have it now.
Oh, okay.
So we still have a hundred and eight, twenty-eight thousand dollars, and this is on personal property?
And lease land.
And lease land.
Uh, no, this is their personal property, their personal property did not sell. Yes, so that's all I have a partial payment on.
Most not again, but.
Most all of them, yes, yeah.
That, that's for another day.
That's for another day, yes. Until, until October, and then, and then, I mean, obviously, there's twenty-three on there, so there will be twenty-four.
Beg.
Yeah. Yeah, the levy, that's it, that's the legal. And which, that mobile home too, I, I'm sure it's still over there, so I don't know why they can levy on the mobile home. With the finance. But.
And to be condition, there's a back tax then, for us?
Mm-hmm.
So, can't, why can't we sell it then, in five years?
Because we can't, we can't issue certificates on personal property or mobile homes. Yeah. Yeah, personal property is just, stricken, but that's good pay, but I just want to. Collectible, but never good enough. Yeah, um, but I, there are a few of these that are out of county ones too, and I don't know how they, from what I read, they could forward them to the other counties to be delivered, but I don't know that that's ever been done either, so. It has to be personally, but. But, so I don't know why. It's all through the state Nebraska, I mean.
Well, I don't know, it's gotta work. Some of them, they might be able to, but some of them are out of state too, aren't they? Aren't they? Only one in there too, maybe in town.
Might be, oh, oh, the NMH, it's Luchtop.
The Parsons, do they still live here in town? Cause they don't live outside the town where they used to be.
I don't know.
I think.
Well, down, down south and on the east side of the highway, yeah, they're, yeah, they're no longer. Well, and their, their son owned that, or some relative out of California owned that for a while, and now they love that.
I don't know, I think, I'm, I'm waiting to hear back on an answer if I should go ahead and forward those to the other county sheriffs and have them go ahead and do it. We, we will unfortunately have paper service in order to do that, but we can collect that feedback. More, right, so, I should, so I'll just wait and see what I hear back as far as if I should send them, since the sheriff did not, or if we just wait until they issue them again, so.
I don't know.
I know, and it's just like, Charles, you could pay them, but then you're gonna be paying them next year too. I know, it, yeah, some of them do not make sense.
Well, you do, I'm pretty sure the Parsons aren't around here anymore, so if you did send them, I'll issue a notification, they're not, they get returned to you. I mean, they, they, well, they wouldn't even be able to serve it.
Right, and I don't recall ever getting them, cause I have to send out twenty-day notices to all of those owners before I can issue a stress warrant, and I didn't get any back, that I recall, so.
You already sent them.
Yeah, sorry, yeah.
Last year, we, we had more than that, we sent everybody one, regardless of how big one's.
Well, I have to. Legally, yeah, statute says I have to regardless, so.
Three thousand dollars, we have a lot of them. Sales and payers.
Yeah.
And all, you'll see my name on it.
Charles paid last year, so he's, he's responsible this year.
And you gotta pay that, what, five years?
Oh, no, personal property never goes away, and you can't get certificates on it, it only goes away once everything's depreciated. And, uh.
Hello? Which one, which property were you talking about? I was just, I missed and missed it. Yeah. Six dollars and five cents.
Is that rock?
Well, that's a sun.
The sun is rock.
Which, the boy? Well, the last time I knew, that there was some people from California that inherited it, and then they sold it, and they're gone, cause.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, if you're in California, I'm thinking originally in California, I would, I wouldn't bother with that.
Well, and, and I don't know, it's been a while, there's two years on there already that I can ask for a stricken before issuing another. Okay. Do you have that one that was being passed on?
I think it's in the.
Oh, okay. That's it. Oh! Sorry.
So what happens if somebody who owes some of this goes bankrupt? Does it just go away?
It just gets, yeah. Stricken until, but, I mean, stricken just off the tax, off of here, it doesn't ever go off the tax law, so it'll still show if bankrupt or not, they, if they go bankrupt and they get a plan, they can still pay under the justice. Huh? That's on all their personal property. I mean, well, I don't know, yeah, cause I think it's all together there, all the businesses is together.
They turn in an inventory or something.
Yeah, depreciations. Yeah, cause this one in here was under bankruptcy, but I never got a plan for them, and. Yeah, he's.
She didn't pass it around, but.
Okay, anyway, no, you're fine, so all those can go with here, I think you didn't too.
Alright. Thank you for the great news.
It would do a GoFundMe for three grand, we'll get those little ones started.
A lot of GoFundMes out about it, Facebook.
Oh my goodness, yes, there are.
Alright, thanks, Crystal.
You're welcome.
See you later. Alright, so, next up here before Dan shows up is that we, that discussion about the floodplain administrator, if we were gonna appoint Millar and Associates to do that work for us as needed. Again, it's a hundred dollars per hour basis, it'd be done by Chad Dixon of Millar and Associates.
Is he local or is he?
He's out of Kearney.
So I guess if you want to, I need to ask them for some sort of contract?
Yeah, it's cause I. I don't want it to be a gentleman's agreement, for sure. This is what, he was supposed to send me a contract, and this is, so Craig was in Alaska fishing and hunting, and I'd asked for this contract for months, and now we find this is what he sent me, so I don't know. Well, we can get, we could probably vote to approve their services and then get a contract at a later date to actually sign, don't you think? Well, and the big thing is, is what we're running into too with this floodplain, is that we've had some issues with modifications in floodplains, and if we, I already received one email that stated if we do not start bringing these people into compliance with our flood zoning, or flooding plane.
The way it is now, we can't get off our county road right, right away.
Right, I know.
That's what it is right now, we can't do anything outside of that, I know I get calls to it, I can't do anything.
We probably better hire somebody that knows what they're doing, but I don't know the two thousand's gonna cut it.
There's, there isn't any time limit on that, or the contract's a lot of times, or it's just hourly hours.
Hourly as needed.
We can go ahead and, and take care of that.
Fair enough, I guess I would entertain a motion and a second then to, um, appoint Millar and Associates as our floodplain administrator.
We would say, change the word point to hire.
Hire, sorry, yeah, you're right, okay.
An hourly wage of a hundred dollars an hour.
Sounds good.
Then we'll make that motion.
Got a motion from Dean in a second, from Richie to hire Millar and Associates as our floodplain administrator for, on a hundred dollar per hour basis as needed. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay, motion carries.
Do you want me to email Craig and ask him?
We can, we, we could, for contract, yeah, cause he was, he, I said I'd catch up with him when he got back, and then I suppose he was going through.
Maybe we'll find, cause there is any time limit on this, we can hire, fire, anytime, any month that we want to, so. On, uh, I should say appoint, hire or not hire, let's put that way.
Yeah, that's all he sent me, there was no contract, that was it. We have about, what, forty-five minutes, do we wanna go through the consent agenda? Okay, we'll go ahead and go through the consent agenda now. Item number one is approvals from the previous Board of Commissioners and Board of Equalization meetings. Item number two is approved council payable claims. Item number three is appoint MIPS to provide JPH postcards. And item number four is authorized chairman signature on applied connective quote for cybersecurity.
Um, I don't, I don't know all the statutory regulations, but the board has to actually have, in the minutes that they appoint someone to do the joint public carrying pink postcards.
That's good, they recommend, I mean, they're making them anyway, and I'll pay for that.
Okay.
We have to do it, and they're, they're all set up for it, they're doing their, call every count, exactly, they're doing them.
Okay.
Oh, any time. Anytime.
I'll tell you what.
It's two in one meeting.
You need to slow down, you need to slow down here. Alright, um, I would entertain a motion to approve those four items on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve consent, approve items one, two, three, and four.
I got a motion from Richie and a second from Dean to approve consent agenda items one, two, three, and four. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all opposed say nay, motion carries.
You got the dressing? Hmm? Dressing today?
So is there, there was no, there was one, this is the same thing that we had before. Nothing's changed.
Right, and I don't know if you guys signed it, and I lost it.
Where are you going?
But they, um.
Yeah, I don't see it.
Yeah, that was the dairy.
Only dairy.
Yeah.
It's not a new one, it's just a transfer. Did you say blink back?
Yeah, I think I did. Ten minutes before Dan shows up.
What was that total on the grand? Twelve thousand?
Excuse me, twelve thousand, two forty-two.
Alright, do we wanna go through correspondence then as well? May as well, right? Item number one is from FEMA, federal funds available for disaster relief. Item number two is Nebraska Department of Water, Energy, and Environment. Issued permit transferred to Hoxwell Land and Cattle. So FEMA is just, in case of, uh. Emergency FYI.
Yeah.
This is our website.
We were declared emergency for drought earlier.
Drought.
But does that, but that was only for payout to farmers though, correct? I think so. Wasn't it? I thought it was. It was a disout, disout, a drought disaster funds for farmers.
They really had it plugged. It couldn't be anything else. To rebuild our roads, it couldn't be anything else.
Alright, and then this here is just a transfer, so they're, are they just, they're making some changes as far as head capacity? Is that right?
It's always been approved, they just changed the ownership.
From, from Kingdom, or is that their name?
They bought Kingdom Dairy.
That's Dairy.
Because that was the east one.
So Hoxwell's owned it now?
He bought it.
Somebody bought it. I don't. That's the change to their name. Can't pay the taxes.
You're right, just to producers through emergency loans.
So they were gonna reduce down three to a hundred head? Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. Yep, yep, yep. So it's two thousand head, and now they're running to go down to seventeen hundred.
They're just gonna turn it into a beef farm? Is that what you're doing? He's not gonna run dairy?
Oh, no, he ain't gonna run dairy, man. Talk about putting a cabin over there. So if a storm comes up, he can put them all inside his building.
As fast as storms blow up around here.
Yeah, you have trouble getting everything moved in. Like last night, we weren't even supposed to, we weren't even supposed to get much rain. Then it just.
My phone said we supposed to get an inch.
When? Last night? Shortly before the.
Alright.
Shortly before.
You do knocking down?
Yeah, always from here. I'm good like that.
It says one year, like, feeding, so.
Yeah. Well, I'm sure you'll use the fence.
We can also go through reports here. We have one from the Sheriff's Department, one from the Clerk's Office, and one from the District Court Clerk's Office.
The sheriff, the jail. Shouldn't we be getting a record of balance carried forward, revenue, one thing? Usually it's on a revenue sheet, we don't have those.
A what?
A revenue on sheriff and jail.
Like a carry, balance carried forward, but unused.
Do you have any record of balance carried forward?
They're all under, they're all under general. And I don't think general ever has a, because it's fully, fully taxed dollars.
And then on the, on that, to take that, we just gotta report it from the Sheriff's Department, for instance. Is he reporting income he's taken in?
Yes, yes. Yep, it's all from the, come, that they've taken in.
You're seeing that?
Seated into my office, and then it just goes, yeah, into my system.
Dan, how are you?
Good.
Good? Alright, I'm just going through the monthly. What's the matter? Are you still thinking about something different?
Well, yeah, I mean, I figured there's about a hundred and forty or fifty thousand carried over in the Sheriff's Department, and yet we're asked, we're being asked to tax the entire budget, not, not bringing anything over. I don't, I don't understand that.
The Sheriff's Office doesn't have a separate revenue fund. It, Crystal, me, Lori, all of us, we're all under general.
Under general, okay.
And generals revenue, it carried over six hundred and thirty-three thousand.
So that's all.
So that's all of us.
Yep, everybody.
Okay.
We don't make a lot of money. We better spend a lot. Don't quote me.
Too late right now.
I could mention that that's four hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars less in June thirty twenty-four. In a general fund.
That's good.
That's bad.
That's bad.
Yeah.
That's bad, Randy.
I know.
Alright, do we just, we just, we ready for Dan, or do you wanna go to these reports quick? It's, they're easy peasy lemon squeezy. There's the Sheriff's Office, there's the Clerk, and there's the Clerk of the District Court. You need to look at these as well. Commissioner Fritchy, are you interested in any of them?
No, my names aren't on there, I'm sure.
Okay, well, so then the Clerk's revenue was eight thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. The District Court Clerk's revenue that, or the amount brought in was one thousand, six hundred seventy-six dollars and twenty-nine cents. And if once you've reviewed that, if you don't mind, just sign underneath my, on the District Clerk's. Report.
Did we, did you call that Sis and find out what's up with that tower?
Um, yes, I did. I did do follow-up on that, and the only repeater on that tower is our road department's repeater.
Okay, do we still use it? Is that for the radios?
That is, that would be for the radio to radio and the maintainers. And then, I don't, my district doesn't use them, but somebody said that they, oh. Somebody said that they still use them. But I have not made arrangements with Mr. Sis yet to cancel that, because we hadn't really talked. But yes, I called that group in Imperial. I dealt with Kevin, and then I called that group in Imperial, various states, and, and they said that they did some checking, and that yes, the only repeater on that tower, that that is, is the one being used for our motor grader, radio, talk around radio.
You guys down there, are they getting by, or are they just using their cell phones, or do they need to use the radios? The torres, they've had bad signal.
Yeah, well, the problem is, is one of the motor graders, when you turn it on, just welches, and it doesn't work anyway. So I don't know that it's necessary expense. If the person, if the people use them, I mean, road building would be nice, right? So they could call, talk to each other as they're laying out a road, but other than that, I don't.
And you've got the tire rental, you've got the radio, they'll keep them on all that, you've got equipment expenses.
Walkie talkies, or?
Yeah, you're right. Seriously. But close enough, if they're just building a mile section of road together.
I think they have a walkie talkie app on their cell phones. I don't know.
I think, maybe got cell reception, that's what I would do.
Wow, I mean, they're just.
Get a headset on, and you bring your hands up, or whatever.
That's what, like, we've always got headset on.
Hey, one more question. Uh, you guys agreed to donate five hundred dollars to Southwest Weed Management? Do you want it to come out of weed, or out of, Evan, weed is part of general, but do you want it designated in that fund?
Yeah, that's good. I think we have quite a little bit, yeah.
Okay.
Alright, ready for Dan. I just need, huh? I just need a, I just need a signature from Charles and you. You wanna, you sign that one for the District Clerk's Court, I guess. Dan, I do believe we're ready for you.
These are pretty preliminary numbers, but one schedule I normally do that I haven't had a chance to get done yet, so. But, uh, what you've got there on top is what the budget would look like now for the tax request, and then I wrote in the prior year numbers also. Things the overall, right now, your tax request is up about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, excuse me, six hundred and twenty thousand dollars, over what it was a year ago. The next page is your, the old restricted funds authority. Uh, under the new regulations, now it is a tax request authority. But you, again, start with last year's tax request instead of restricted funds. And then they also have your, uh, the taxes levied. Uh, this number comes from the state auditor's office. And then you get the five point one seven percent growth in that number. And if there is a growth in, um, taxable value, you get that percentage also. You don't have that number yet, so.
We don't have the real growth yet, do we?
No, not that I, we should know that next, next Monday.
Maybe another half a point, maybe.
Yeah. So you get a two hundred and thirty-one increase, so you're, right now, your property tax request authority is four million, seven oh nine. Again, you're three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars over that number right now. And then the two percent for your pink postcard. Uh, so you can go up, your taxes can go up by the authority, five percent, but you still have the two percent limit on your postcard, so, um, that's something to.
Plus the real growth percentage. Plus real growth.
Yeah, yeah. So right now it's five hundred and twenty-eight thousand over on that two percent, so. So those are the numbers, uh, and then you should have the last sheet, it's kind of a summary of all the different, uh, actual numbers for last year, plus the last year's budget request, this year's budget request. On the general fund, clear off to the right is the difference from the prior year, increase or decrease. Overall, it's a two hundred and forty-nine thousand dollar increase on the general fund. Uh, and then voter's actually down, fair is down, self-insurance is up eight thousand. So, you know, overall, it's a six hundred thousand dollar increase over prior, the prior year budget. And again, I mentioned earlier that the general fund was down four hundred and ninety-three thousand. Part of that is the transfers from the general to self-insurance and to road, if you're required to make the fund those two. The road fund, the transfers are like seven hundred and seventy-five thousand from general to road. Road fund is actually up five hundred and fifty thousand. So that's where your general fund money is, is sitting in road right now. So it didn't just lock the door, it's sitting in another fund.
Well, I think it's good that you're to make that transfer.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah. So this year, the transfer is three sixty-four. It shows on this sheet here. Uh, the other thing about this is if you look at the inheritance tax fund, it has a balance of four point six billion right now. And last year, you did a transfer from inheritance to general to lower the tax levy at six hundred and nine thousand dollars. So if you do the same thing this year, the same amount, you're under all the limits.
We didn't actually do the transfer.
Right, you didn't make the transfer, didn't have to. Money's still sitting there. So.
So we could do the resolution to use it if needed, just to keep it under that, or to be able to do that, to keep it under the five point one seven?
Yep.
And the two percent.
And the two percent.
Oh, and the two percent. So then we wouldn't have to even do the pink postcards if we kept them, if we.
So just comparing the two years, that's, you know, that's the way it would come out if you did the same thing.
Because last year it was, how much did we get? We do the resolution for inheritance?
Uh, six hundred and nine.
Six hundred.
Yeah.
And we're only.
Under the two percent, five twenty-eight.
Okay, yeah. And then it's less than it was last year, at least? Is that what you would write the rule?
Oh, don't know. So the other, the other thing you can do is, you know, on the calculation of property tax request, there are all kinds of exceptions you can use to lower that number down. But then, think, yeah, the thing is, you add those back next year. The only thing I could see doing an exception on would be your bond payments, because you're gonna do those every year. So next year, you get it back, you take it off, add it back, take it on, so.
Oh, so you can still do the exceptions every year? You don't have to add it back? It doesn't come back to bite us?
It does. Next year, you add it back, uh, if you took the exception, you add it back, and then you have to take it again to lower it back down. So it's. But that would be the only thing that would make sense, as long as you have the bond payments and continue to make the list. And the only other thing would be, you know, your big increases are, you know, sheriff and jail. Uh, those would be exceptions. And that would be one way to kind of spread that cost over a couple of years. Take the exception, add it back next year, and, you know, hopefully you won't have that same increase. And then you have the tax levy to, uh, offset your payback next year, so.
That's a, that's a heck of a tax increase on the levy, I mean, by doing that. So, the way I understand it, obviously, you know, we know that, that those exceptions, they have to be taken off our base next year. The base, the question on the base is, the base is gonna be what we asked for taxes this year.
Right.
So, I mean, it's not gonna be based on the taxes that we asked last year.
No, that was the number that we're starting with this year.
So next year, we add, we have to add the exemptions back in, we're taking it off of that by year.
Yeah.
We're still looking at a, a heck of a tax increase by taking, taking those exceptions too.
Yeah.
What was that number you just gave us over for, for the inheritance tax to, to make it come out?
Uh, to get below the two percent, you would need five twenty-eight.
Did you, did you figure out what it was?
To get below the, the.
Five, five point.
The tax request authority is three eighty-six.
Three eighty-six, that's the way I have to show the transfer.
Well, I mean.
I got, yeah, I just gave it three, three sixty-two. But I'm taking into account that half a point for the real growth percentage, I'm taking that into account. And you're not, right?
Right.
That's what we come up with, three eighty-six, that's without, that's real growth.
Like I said, there's one schedule that I don't have completed yet that I normally do, and that's every fund beginning balance, income, expenses, ending balance, so that takes, and you do count the changes to the balances, the funds, that's what I think, so. But general and road are the big ones, that basically know what those numbers are. There's all the other funds that don't request taxes. Their increase in number, they make a lot of difference. I think that was one reason the fair request was down is because the fair, uh, fund balance is higher than what those usually are. So the tax request is less here.
Well, I mean, the concern I have is, what, what's? So we've been using the inheritance fund to buy down the budget every single, well.
The tax request.
The tax request, yeah.
We're basically using a reserve.
Right.
So we don't have to budget as much, we pay the money for inheritance. We're not using that, but we're, we're using it as a reserve fund. Basically, that's gonna go back.
That's what I know.
Basically, we're not gonna have it.
Well.
Just barely got to feed it this time, because it couldn't get a closure, so that's why you're losing it now.
So I mean, what's your advice on this, Dan? On what do we need to do? Do we need to cut? Do we need, uh?
I'm just looking at tax requests for the general, these are related ones, I have this for the general. Is that right?
You know what?
I'm just looking at the general fund alone. Tax request of twenty-four, twenty-five versus twenty-five, twenty-six, it wrote in, nine dollars higher.
Uh, six hundred thousand. Six ninety-five from thirty, from three, six, eleven to forty-two, eighty-seven.
Why don't we pick this sheet, we'll be careful. Just look at the tax request.
Yeah, and that, that takes into account, the general fund request takes into account, uh, the money transferred to the road and the money transferred to the self-insurance. And so, the road is lower by three hundred thousand, basically, so it's. Yeah.
Go back down, so that increase.
So with the numbers right now, without the act, the increased value, we are allowed a two hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar increase in our budget, is that correct?
And your tax request.
Tax request, yes.
We will know when that's gonna affect us until we get our valuation reports on August twentieth, as far as sign out our valuation, but that's gonna add a hell of a lot of taxes to books.
And so to keep it at just the two hundred and thirty-one thousand increase, we would need to decrease our, our tax ask by how much?
Uh, three hundred and eighty-six thousand.
So that would be asking the different offices to cut their budgets by, or trying to figure out which offices, which departments could cut, to try to cut three hundred and eighty-six thousand out of our.
I don't think we're asking to cut, we're gonna, we got lower our, our increases.
Right, that's what I mean, asking them to take off like a.
Yeah, with the increases on, you know, there's only three, three departments really that can afford a purchase.
So I guess my question is, this is, we've used, the first year I was here, we used eight hundred thousand dollars to use as a reserve out of the inheritance fund. Last year, it was six oh nine. And this year, it'd have to be six.
To get to below the two percent, it would be five twenty-eight.
So we've been doing that every year, but we're getting this five percent increase, five point one seven percent increase, and we're allowed, I mean, in the real growth. I'm just trying to think through this. My biggest concern is, is that I really, it's fine if it's a reserve fund, but I don't really like to, I don't want that. Inheritance may actually be used, and that's what I'm concerned about.
Capital expenses, I don't want that, I didn't see that.
Well, that's, that's where you're gonna start using.
That's where you're using that, if you lose the capital, they have to, they can go back. On the other hand, the state statute of the third floor, the law was five point one seven. This year, I think it's gonna be another half of that, or the thing of the real growth, it must be like that on August twentieth. We should be looking at about five point seven. And that is, if you take the maximum amount that allows to do, not worry about the paint cards. I almost feel like, and I, I hate to say this, I've never been this way before, but I think we're gonna have to go ahead and take the full amount that the state will allow us to take. And not worry about the paint cards. We've been really, really good about that, we've never had to worry about paint card, we've never had to go to the joint meeting and explain that before. Without L B thirty-four, right now, next year, the next year we do, the next time we do a budget, that increase could be zero. It's five point one seven, would surprise the hell out of us this year, but next year could be zero. Then what are you gonna do?
Well, then you implement a budget that looks identical to the year before.
You have to. Either after to get inheritance. That's what you have to do.
It would, if, if there's zero percent growth following year, everybody's budgets will look identical next year to this year's.
That doesn't mean there won't be more growth, it's not like, it just means the state's not gonna allow you to increase the base taxes over one, zero percent of what you did.
Right.
You can't have. You know, a lot of your entities seen this coming. We saw it coming too, but we weren't, I wasn't, I was, for myself, I wasn't willing to raise taxes like, we'll be able to thirty percent in one year. In order to avoid what could happen in the following years under L B thirty-four, because they weren't under L B thirty-four last year. We are now.
Does this budget worry you, Dan? More so than previous years? I mean, what, what, what are you seeing that you're, that, that's bothersome to you?
I don't know that there's really anything, um, you know, you're just looking at numbers, you know, you, you look at the increase you have in the sheriff and jail, but you know, those are, those are, and aren't necessary.
Right, yeah.
Disunderstanding anyway, so. Without that, I mean, you're, I mean, that's, uh, two hundred and five thousand of your increase, so. But other than that, I think, and, and, again, till I do that other schedule, just see what the overall cash position is, uh, total balances of all accounts. I don't really see too much of an issue on anything, other than, you know, you don't know what the inflation percentage is gonna be next year. Everybody says inflation's down this year from what it was a year ago, so that mean the other number's gonna be down next year?
Sure will.
Do you want to know for another twelve months?
Right.
The question is, do you want to take the maximum amount that L B thirty-four allows us? Or do you want to make sure that we don't move the joint piece of the paint cards? That's what comes down. Do you want to show us three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars short of our five hundred thousand? That's what comes down. Tonight, I think so, once we get the real growth, that five point eight, it will be a smaller, it's a little smaller.
But these preliminary numbers aren't like the sixteen thousand off general going to the KIP, right? That's, these, these numbers don't include that, does it?
I don't think, was that ever actually like?
They just voted on it.
Oh, they just, okay, so.
So that'd be another sixteen thousand that comes off of the general, that would go to the KIP expenses.
Yes.
Not that that's, but that's, I mean, every little bit helps.
Yes.
As far as from art, from the general side, and then.
So what's that changed?
So the, the kit now is going to be responsible for sixteen thousand.
Of insurance.
Of, for the insurance and stuff from the fair.
I said that to you.
She did. Actually, the number's closer to twenty-one, I don't remember if it came up with sixteen.
Well, see, they were in the meeting, they discussed it, that, that, that those are the only buildings that was bought with Tom Kiplinger money. But then there's the, uh, there's stalls and stalls and stuff that are actually being utilized for the furtherance, and the funds that are generated from that, going to the KIP fund, but they. I didn't know if you received those numbers, this was just decided last Wednesday night.
Wednesday night, yeah.
Okay, so you're talking horse arena fund?
Yes, sir.
I thought I updated those. Sixteen, four fifty-nine.
Umbrella Insurance, sixteen, four fifty-nine is on the number that I have.
They are?
Yes.
So that's included in there?
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
That wasn't, I don't think that was changed, she probably was saying, she said.
It's, it's two oh six oh seven.
Yeah, sixteen, five, forty, or four fifty-nine. Umbrella Insurance. And budget came out exactly the same, even after adding that sixteen thousand. Well, we got a ten thousand dollar reduction in miscellaneous. And then, the only thing I didn't know is they had rodeo on here before, and that's gone now.
It is gone.
What is that for? Was that for this?
The high school rodeo they had here.
And there was a, they had to shut it down last year and the year before, they had a whole separate checking account and.
Oh, that's a rodeo committee?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. And you use the cars under stars budget? Anyway, so you, those numbers are figured in there?
Yeah.
I wonder how much of this is, also comes into, I wonder how much total it was on payroll for three percent raise across the board for the county employees? You know, what, how much, how much is that portion of?
Were there very many offices that figured out three?
I think everybody did.
Most people did two and a half.
Did they, two and a half? So I think the health department did three.
I did.
Did two and a half or three?
I, I, well.
I'm just trying to figure out how much.
Mine might, mine might reflect the two and a half.
Do we feel like inflation is starting to plateau? You think?
I think it is. But then they don't use the CPI number, they're using SLICE numbers for the, the cost that local and state governments are basing. That's what they base this on, L B thirty-four is based on SLICE, not CPI.
Health is three percent.
That's what I thought.
But I can go through these and figure.
Well, I guess I'd like to know in total of what everybody at two and a half percent raise would be, and just get an idea of where we're at on that.
I guess they're giving three percent. Cordiality notes here, it looks like you did two percent, Chris. It's kind of hard, I just use a total, because you know, the people change too, so you just go in total, and that's probably not the fairest way to do it, but I don't have else to do it.
Well, so in all, in all true fairness, I mean, we had some increases along the way, but the sheriff's office and jail was the big one.
Hey, will you bring me the latest cable register?
Everybody else has done a very good job.
Well, it's hard to believe when you look at this, how bad, how much has went up. I mean.
And then you've got, you've got a sheriff, and you've got a jailer that was retired during the spring, having inflated prices of what we agreed to, which is fine, you had to do that to give him, but then you turn around and ask for another increase now, just four, four or five months later.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out if there's ever a point in the time where we plateau out here and we, we stop seeing these increases like this, because. I would say though, in, in defense of Kevin, I, I would say though, that he, he'd been operating off no staff for a long time, and then he finally got a staff, and I know that we're budgeting for five deputies, and then. I just know that if we look around, that, and I'm not, remember the first year when he came in here, he asked for that amount roughly, give or take, the first time around? Before he had any new hires?
And I kept saying, what did I keep saying?
I know.
You budgeted for five, why don't you budget for four? Never would agree to that.
Well.
And then got five, and it inflated prices now.
No, you're right, it got, it was.
And what he's paying is a hell of a lot more than what we have referred. Not picking on him particularly, but.
I thought that.
People are basing the same thing, and they take an increase and they give them half.
Well, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to better understand if we need to start, if we need to make cuts, but I don't know. I don't know, some of these budgets. And we talk about this every time, I mean, we talk about this every year on employee raises, where, where, where do we, where do we go with that every year, or what do we do?
Wage increases, it's a dollar a time.
You're gonna change things. Now is not the time, you're gonna have to work on it next month, and the month after, and the month after that.
Five foot concrete, build post back during a big dollar ninety-five for four foot concrete. Good, you're ready for this, huh?
You mean, you mean like, what do you mean, like on wages, or what do you, what do you mean, like on wage scales?
Yeah, yeah, that type of thing.
Right, but we'll have to, I mean, if we do.
These are ten percent.
Is that what they come out to be?
According to my phone. But you couldn't keep any, any of this price here.
So that was a ten percent increase on the, on the deputy's salary?
For accounting, for accounting our size, how many should we have for deputies? I mean.
H- h- honestly, like, and I'm being truthful, like, if you talk to Kevin, when you take a look at, and this is, this is no lie, when you look at paper service alone, courtroom security, and then responding to calls, and having somewhat coverage, like, if you're, he's got some. Courtroom security and then responding to calls and having somewhat coverage, like if you're, he's got some nexus of how he's so many, a twelve hour shift and then off so many hours and then back on. I mean, honestly, if you look at Dundee, if we're just gonna look locally, close locally, um. Dundee County has had upwards of five to six deputies, Hitchcock County has had four. I mean, way smaller communities have, yeah.
Well, I, I assume at least five for, I mean.
Yeah.
It's all so bad, counties, they're not just deputies. The jail, the dispatch.
You're right.
All that stuff too.
Well.
And we're paying the city for dispatching, we're paying a million dollars for a jail, so.
I know.
You can't compare those like that.
They don't beat the dispatching, no, but. No, they have hired. Oh, Hitchcock County has their own dispatchers, yeah, yeah. I don't think Kevin's out of line with what he's asking, it's just that we have been, that we've been, he's been operating in such a small budget all along that this comes as a big surprise when. But.
Okay, now, uh, this is our total gross salaries.
Okay.
At three percent, that would go up to seven thousand, no, more than that, nine thousand. At two and a half, it goes up seven.
Really, I'm not sure.
No, every, it's the entire.
Sorry, seven thousand a, a month?
No, yes, yes, sorry.
Is that all?
You mean that all?
No, I know, I'm not saying, I thought it was more, I thought it was higher than that.
It was more than that, yes.
Yeah, I don't know if this, I mean, this is our, the last page of our payroll register, total, um, gross.
Is that with officials or without?
That's everybody.
That was the last register?
That was.
Two hundred ninety-six thousand on the year?
Two weeks ago.
Well, that can't be right.
Is that not right?
No, because I mean, you look at like these, the road workers are like fifty thousand dollars a year, we got nine of them.
And so you don't think three hundred thousand covers it?
That's for the whole year, or that's just last month?
One month.
Oh, just one month.
Just a month.
Yeah, grand total.
Okay, I thought you were looking at the years total.
About three and a half.
No, no, this, this is July's payroll.
Got you.
Three hundred thousand dollars.
Right. So that'd be, if you wanted two and a half percent raise, it'd be eighty-four thousand dollars a year. I'm just looking if we need to start cutting somewhere, is all, and I don't know, I don't know.
So, yeah, seventy-five hundred a month, at two percent. Seventy-four hundred.
Do either of you have any ideas of what your, what your opinion is, I mean, or what you wanna do? Do you wanna buy it down with inheritance, do you wanna make some cuts to try to shave some off? What do you think is?
I wanna go through, everything is capital outlay, look at all capital outlays, like the health board for car, sheriff needs another car maybe too, maybe with a ref. I wanna look at those kind of things and I have no problem with looking at inheritance for those.
You already took the car off health?
I know.
Okay, okay.
I know we did, I'm just.
Okay, that's the kind of thing you're looking for.
That's what I'm looking at capital outlays, but I do not want to use payroll, uh, inheritance tax. I don't mind doing capital outlay at all, those are things that are gonna be here for a long time unless they go bankrupt.
Well, that's my thing, you can't start dipping into payroll, or payroll and inheritance, cause that's a losing proposition.
We don't know how long inheritance is gonna last, and every time we do one of these budgets, we're carrying balances forward, which is a reserve, the only reserve that we'll, we'll have is inheritance right now. We need to build inheritance, but we don't have enough root actually, I mean, inheritance, the building reserve, we don't actually have enough tax ability to build a reserve right now. So we're limited to inheritance. I don't know what'll happen in the election, I don't know for now yet. More people wanting to get rid of the inheritance, what we tried to do?
Don't forget that L A T C F, we've got a hundred thousand in there.
To me, that's, that's almost, that's the same as inheritance, I mean, I know, I know it's inheritance. We can even sacrifice vehicles if we have to, that's fine. That's why I'm not afraid to take capital outlays out.
So, do you, are you asking what our total capital outlay ask is?
We're just gonna have to, we need to see, I don't think, I just wanna go through my book.
So let me ask you this, when do we need, so she needs, the clerk needs, what wages are gonna be posted on?
You have to see it by Friday.
By Friday. And.
You're gonna have to give a number right now, that's across the board, Kevin. Can't sit here today and say, well, you're gonna get this much, you're gonna get this much, and then you got the sheriff department comes in and wants seven. How do, how do we do that? Can we do it across the board, or we can say, this much, this much? Is that what we're gonna do today?
I don't know, she has to have.
Number by Friday.
Well, you'd almost have to. Yeah, we will.
So your publication, that is general, it's not specific.
It's not by name, no, it's by office.
And position, you know, if I chair a deputy is fifty thousand.
Yes.
And so, that's how many years. It just, that, that position exists now, so that can be a little more generalized.
It doesn't, it doesn't limit you by giving rates to unelected people, getting technically areas, though.
No.
So it's just a piece of bill, it's a damn business.
You see what this, the Billy clerk, clerk up the handle.
Oh, boy.
His, his publication was kinda funny.
What did it say?
I can't remember, I have to do this because they say that I have to, so. People get, people get ten fifty an hour for grunt work and I hope this satisfies them.
You couldn't have made too many mad people mad at him, well.
No.
That's funny, it's just, let's just be careful of it. If it's not road itself, it could be changed anytime.
Well, can it, after it's been published?
Yeah.
You can change wages after it's been published?
I would think you could if.
We did last year.
Yeah, we did.
That's basically, this person, this position will make this much per hour or salary this or whatever, so. So all the officials will be listed, like their salary, that's pretty much that.
Yeah.
That's all known, as far as, you know, clerical, you could probably even take an average of all the offices. Clerical salaries are, you know, fifty dollars an hour.
Well, that's another thing, that's around the corner.
You can change it anytime, you need the part, just. Make it two and a half and go. Make it nothing to go.
And then do an increase on the backside?
Well, if the.
This is just for the general fund.
Capital outlays are three thousand.
Economy's not all that well.
No.
Farming would pay a lot of taxes. Three dollar eighty six more, I don't know where it is, it's not, it's not paying.
This one we probably don't need to worry about, cause road has a lot of money, right?
Yeah.
I think we do. Are we carrying that two million forward, plus? Okay. I just wanted to make sure on that.
And buyback, that capital outlays three hundred thousand, but.
That's just what's in, you know, you.
That's, yeah, that's what that's for.
Yeah.
And that's on the tax request.
No.
No ones affect your tax request would be then, uh, fair. Have you been, general and fair would be the only capital outlay, things that affect your budget.
And health, but I think it's already got made it down.
Yeah.
I think, guys gotta get a cap figured out.
Well, it's not, it's not the first year that I mentioned like wage ranges.
Because corporations will, you go up so far enough to.
You're capped out.
That or get, get rid of them, cause I can hire two, two more people back in and start over to the same price.
I'll let you come run my office.
No, I couldn't stand there in position all the time. I would trade you jobs for a while.
No, I don't want, I don't want to work out in the heat, I'm just saying, like, in, in retrospect to what you just said as far as getting rid of one and hiring two more. I would much rather pay the, the, the top than have to go through training two people.
Yes, but people don't, they don't look at it that way, it's, they don't care what it costs to train. I, I mean.
Corporation, yes.
I've seen it for.
A lot of.
Lots.
A lot of bigger companies, people, like, it's just a number, but.
Well, everybody's just a number.
I know, I don't know. I mean, obviously, every single year, and I haven't been here long, but there's just been increase, 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 and I wonder if we're ever gonna flatline on this or not.
Well, and it's normally just, you know, like it has been, two and a half across the board, you know, and whatever, and. And like I mentioned the last time, the way that we've, we've done it in my office and other offices too. Take that two and a half percent and divide it out amongst our whole offices, which then in return makes it look like one person got a bigger increase, percentage increase than the next person.
So, I mean, you mean you're collectively taking that two and a half percent amongst your entire budget and then awarding it out in different increments?
So, I take, if I get a two and a half percent increase on my salaries, I take that salary, I take that addition, that increase. And I divide it out between all of my girls.
Quite honestly, Crystal, when the state's statute you're allowing to do that.
Uh, yes, I know, but I'm just going back to like Ted was saying, last time, like the increases, the percentage increases of which one looked like they were getting a lot more than the other person because it is. More of a percentage on their salary than it is.
Right, but it, at no one point should you, even if you took two and a half percent and combined it all into one. The, 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 the top would be still, if everything, like, if we did the five point five percent over the last two years. And you take, took that five point five percent over your total payroll allowance, your budget payroll amount. There's nobody that should be getting six, eight, twenty-two percent, you see what I'm saying, that's still over the amount that would allow, even if you took that five point five percent over your payroll total. That's.
How, how much money are we looking for, three hundred and something thousand?
Thirty.
Thirty-six to get below the five point one seven, L B thirty four.
If everyone got rid of their capital outlay in the general fund, that's the courthouse, that would save us a hundred and fifteen. Fair, they are at two sixty-five. Last year they spent thirty-one. However, if, if something happened to one of the buildings, they wouldn't have enough to.
And I think that two sixty-five is in there if they rate, because they're also showing two hundred thousand dollars in donations. Right. Get the donations and try that, cause they don't, they don't wanna try that.
So it's about sixty. Yeah, right, it's revenue, on the revenue sheet is, is offsetting, so, yeah, okay, so about sixty-five.
Okay. Uh, help, I think we ended up with fifteen after they took off the car. Is that right?
Yeah, cause there was, um.
Car was thirty-eight.
But they had to budget, what was it for?
I don't, I like, I'm a scribble, I don't have a.
It wasn't, it was, they talked about the generator.
Oh, that, that came off, that was a non-issue. The car was forty.
Thirty-one.
Oh, on the clerk.
Yes, thirty-one five.
Thirty-one, yeah.
So, I don't remember what that sixty-five was for.
That's, she had it down as part of the generator and, and we discussed that, it shouldn't be there, it shouldn't be there.
Right, absolutely.
Generator's not a capital outlay.
So she budgeted twenty for the generator and forty for the car. That moves five thousand, so I think they're five thousand now.
I think that's probably three quarters.
I like going scribbles.
Yeah, I, I thought that there was a reason, was that grant?
I got fifteen, is what I got.
I, I started with fifteen.
I got fifteen, I took.
We had, that's what we had down.
It's fifteen, okay.
Was fifteen. I don't know, I'm trying to figure out what that was for, or why she wanted to budget that.
I can't remember either, was it something about a freezer or?
Yeah, she was talking about that, yeah, but she's got.
Or some way to outfit the, the car they want.
Oh, I don't remember, um, we're looking at, those figures, they're looking at a hundred and eighty-five thousand capital outlays roughly. Roughly fifty to fifteen on the help.
Well, like at the fair, we've always budgeted two hundred thousand, but that, that's, that's affected.
We also see a revenue side of two hundred thousand.
You're right, so then that, that offsets, it's a wash, so there's really nothing there that you're gaining by cutting that out of the fair budget.
There's things at the fair, I don't look, but I'm talking about that.
How?
They just come up with fifty-sixty-five thousand.
Janitorial, wasn't that discussed? Offices needing to be cleaned every night, and.
It was a rodeo at the last meeting and nobody was willing to budge. They allowed for sixteen thousand for the Kiplinger to come out of the Kiplinger side for insurance. They voted to not take any of Giles' wages out of the Kiplinger and the janitorial, he cut it by seven thousand, we're still at thirty thousand dollars. I know. And, and, and that leads me, I mean, that's not gonna affect the budget when I order, but, I mean, not in the, not in the realm of things, but there were some of these. That, there's some of these wages that I didn't wanna talk about, that's not gonna affect us, I mean, drastically affect us overall budget, but I did wanna talk about the fair as well.
Yeah, and this budget.
Went down.
Yeah.
It went down.
Twelve, twelve pounds.
I mean.
That was a little.
Well, I get just his payroll budget, I'm.
Well, hi, Brian.
Like, twelve thousand.
I, I just can't figure out how they don't, they're gonna be, Kiplinger's gonna change parts of his way.
It was said that his breakdown was eighty percent county and twenty percent Kiplinger.
And that's wrong, you know that's wrong.
How do you prove it?
I don't know. There's, the fair goes on once and then, you know, we got some other things in there, but that kid's going all the time.
Right, but he's also, I mean, he has to manage all the, the buildings for the fairgrounds also.
Yeah, well, they're all, so that's the problem with this whole thing, is they're all county buildings. And they're, cause they're all on county property, but the Kiplinger is, is just a beast of its own, where all the revenues generated off of those facilities stays in that fund. So it's never used to buy down the tax ask of the people, which that's a misnomer, because that was the optics that was portrayed, and in, in articles wrote by Tom Kiplinger, he said that this, these facilities will be self-sufficient. There's no tax money's gonna be used for the operation of these facilities, and I, I, at the board meeting, I said, that is just absolutely not true. I said, you have, you have. I said, you have, you have a fair manager's salary, you had insurance coming out of there, you had, we have a lot of cross. You know, we have the merchant building that has stalls in it, but the rent from the stalls is going back to the Kiplinger fund, even though the merchant building is a county building. That wasn't purchased with Tom Kiplinger money. And so we're having this. And then as far as figuring hours on machinery, we pay a quarter of the price, the, the lease on a skid loader. But is the skid loader really being used a quarter of the time on the fairgrounds or is it being used a hundred percent of the time at the Kiplinger? And so we're having a really difficult time trying to break down and keep everybody separated and then.
And there's two, there's two skid loaders up there.
Right.
We use one part of time and they use it all the time.
Right. And, and, um, I don't know. I, I guess I, I'm looking at this, yeah. So I mean, I'm looking at the, the, the salaries. I mean, this is one thing. The fair board was not interested in taking over a portion of Giles' salaries. Um, he is at currently thirty-one dollars an hour, which is next to the elected officials and Randy Bird and R N. That's the next highest paying salary in the county. And the board voted not to have any of that salary be paid for out of the Kiplinger. So I mean, I feel like that position as far as hourly wages sealing it out pretty, pretty much.
He makes, he makes quite a bit less than an elected official. He's at thirty, or at fifty-eight thousand.
But you take fifty-eight thousand, divide that out in the one thousand eight hundred and twenty hours in a, in a working year. Cause he's only thirty-five hours a week, one thousand eight hundred and twenty, which is your.
You could use thirty-five hours a week loosely because I'm at, um, twenty-four hours a day.
I know, I know his pain. I know his pain, but that's what, I mean, if you're going to look at it, you get an hour lunch and you're working from eight to four. Then you still have seven hours a day on the books as far as, I mean, I know there's other things, but, you know, so then that's where I'm getting the thirty-one dollars an hour. Is what I'm coming up with. No different than how I'd figure anybody else's salary in the courthouse that works thirty-five hour weeks.
So you said that he's still, that they still have thirty thousand dollars budgeted in the janitorial?
Yeah.
And how much of that was the eye complex getting cleaned every night?
I did not get a breakdown. And I, I.
Cause they can vote on that all, but it's, at the end of the day, it's your say.
No, you're right. At the end of the day, it's, you, once the budget is approved, that's the money they have to operate on. Yes.
I mean, not every office of, I.
Uh, you know what I'm saying. Like every office has their things, right? But I mean, yes, and it's one of those things that I'm not. I don't know. What we got?
The carry office is.
Sixty-two dollars an hour.
This army office, like, we're checking, is it getting every night?
No, one thousand, eight hundred.
She's twenty, she actually sucks.
But to go through and back to call office every night is what they get.
Dan, or?
Oh, eighteen twenty.
Yeah, eighteen twenty. Yeah, cause what is it, two thousand and, I'm losing my marbles.
Two thousand eight.
He is full-time, one thousand eight twenty is thirty-five hours a week. Yep, thirty-seven, thirteen, okay. That's what you're raised. Giles would be a thirty-two if we were figuring out the numbers that.
Um, but you're saying that all this fair discussion doesn't help us with our purpose this morning?
What, yeah.
Is that what you said?
For which one?
The fair discussion doesn't help us with our budget discussion this morning?
Well, I mean, not when you're talking about his raise or his, unless we're going to cut janitorial, unless we're going, I mean, his raise is two thousand dollars a year. No, you're right. No, I understand. But at the overall, this is my concern is, is that if we just continually go up, up and up and up and up and up, where does this flatline? Cause if we come in, I mean, at, at the end of the day, we're victims. If it comes back as a zero percent increase next year, you're going to be looking at an exact budget as you did the year before. Or this fiscal year. But the question is, is do you just, I mean. I like, like Commissioner Fritsch echoed, I mean, it, times are, the vast majority of the taxpayers are getting squeezed pretty hard. But I just don't know. Sounds like we need another day of budget workshop.
You want me to get Monday because Lori will have the assessed value.
We'll have the assessed value, we'll have the real growth numbers.
Do you want me to get again on Monday and discuss this and go over?
Oh, I can't.
Okay.
But I, I'd like to do it on the, but it's just not Monday.
Tuesday?
Yeah.
Charles, do you have anything in here?
What we do Tuesday.
The nineteenth?
No, I don't have anything.
So, nineteen, Dan, you free?
I think.
Till we give you more numbers, not a lot more you can do, right?
Oh, yeah, there's, there's that other scheduling you need to put together, but that, that will show operating capital outlay for everybody. Getting in any balances and all that kind of stuff, so, um. Yeah, I think the nineteenth should work. It's better than Monday.
Is it? Were you?
And then Hitchcock and Dundee and back in eight thirty.
You're going to Hitchcock County Board meeting on Monday?
Yep. What time on the nineteenth?
Go and move it. Let's just do eight thirty.
And I'll just publish general numbers with a two and a half percent, whatever.
Okay.
If we come under, that's great.
Do you think that we're going to end up, do you think any of those, I'm one, I'm curious, so I guess my hundred thousand dollar question is, is, is payroll or any of this stuff, i.e. with all the payroll, countywide? Is this going to start chewing into that if we were to use the ARPA, Fund for ARPA inheritance funds to buy down the budget? Are we going to start using that reserve is what my question is.
I'm looking at Danny's numbers. He got roughly two hundred dollars, two hundred thousand in capital outlays. That's where I'm at. I don't want to get into, I want to get into that stuff.
But if you take away all your capital outlays just to afford your payroll, what happens when we get into capital outlay issues that we're going to be? You see what I'm saying? It's dealing for Paul to get the feeder at that point.
But I'm saying I'm not going to, I won't be feeding periods money just to pay for Jason either. And I, I don't know, I think most everybody's been pretty, pretty long here, but it's most everybody except for the building here.
Well.
If you're going to build a jail against the populations.
I was not in favor of that jail.
I know, but it got built. We better be able to run it.
You know, the sad part is what we were paying Lincoln County to house prisoners up there is cheaper.
I want cheaper, I don't know. I think it's cheaper if we built it too. Everybody said, well, it's going to cost too much, transfer prisoners. Well, what does it cost to have twelve full-time jails and eight thousand dollars a month for food for seven prisoners right now? So we wouldn't have an extra food price to, it was a flat, you know, that was a hundred thousand dollars worth of food.
Because their bills were like thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five thousand a month.
I used to walk them in, but these kind of prices come back after you shut the thing back down and open up the bed and breakfast over there.
Do you?
Wouldn't that be kind of neat? You can rent a room in a jail cell and we'll lock the door for extra money.
What? Anyway, um, but, but yeah, that, um, we'll go, hey, publish those preliminaries, preliminary two and a half percent. And we're going to probably be chewing on this some more. And then Dan, if you can come back on the nineteenth and revisit us. You know what, though? Is it really wise to have Dan come in on the nineteenth at eight thirty? Cause do you think we need some time to sit down here and make some proposed cuts as a board? And then have Dan come in later in the day so that we can say, here's what we're looking?
Well, he's got to have time to clutch everything that's straight.
But does he want to sit here with us the whole time? Will we model through this back and forth?
Cause I could have.
Oh, I suppose.
Just schedule updated and then that other.
Can you just give us a schedule, the detail of all funds, income, expenses prior year, budgeted going forward?
So I can have that, uh, just give, you know, if I got that depending on, well, I, I, I need the. If I get the assessed valuation and the growth numbers, if I can even get that Friday.
We won't have it by the twenty.
Or even, even on Monday, I could have just these worksheets, two penny. So you guys could look, have those numbers for when you started and then if you want to get them up later, then give me a call when you're ready and come up.
Okay. And that'll list out the increases on payroll and everything that from the year prior as far as where we're.
Well, it'll be, it's grouped by, because these are the numbers I have to put on the budget. Uh, operating expenses, uh, transfers between funds, capital outlay. And then where the money is coming in, any different federal, state or local funds.
Okay.
That works. And then how much of tax for each.
Well, Lori's not supposed to get the valuation until.
The twenty is the one, they typically have earlier.
They would be at the real growth, they have a total value.
Yeah.
By before.
Okay. Well, that's, they're, they normally have to wait on some number from the state. Uh, but if that's been, if they know that, then, then yeah, they get the number. Cause they, I'm sure they have everything else, just waiting on that number. And then once they get that, they finalize it. But it is typically a few days before the twenty.
Okay.
If I can stop down on my way out.
She's still here.
Oh, technically. Anybody else who know? The numbers, okay.
No, they, uh, they are so new.
And I'll leave her, she in your office, in your office.
You what?
To come up with some differences.
Okay.
Okay.
I know my scribbles. When I had, I brought down three sixty-two, you have three eighty-six.
Yeah.
Three eighty-six.
Yeah.
That's an order for the five point, stay within the five point.
Yeah.
So we just, we just took two hundred thousand, like, put that on inheritance. We'd be looking at around less than two hundred. I mean, I just.
Yeah.
And we have to write down as inheritance.
Yeah. Okay, I'll get some more numbers to you.
Okay.
Clear my calendar for next Monday.
Thank you.
Next Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Yep.
Got it. All right.
Thanks, Dan.
I'll probably see you Monday, done it, trip.
Okay, I won't be there till eleven, so.
Uh, mine, mine's at ten thirty, so I'll.
Is there any more budget discussion we want to have? Well, but you wanted full capital outlay, right?
No, I just did, I just, I had the number, he said, he said three eighty-six. And once we get that real growth number, we're probably closer to three sixty-two, okay?
Yeah.
So just rough figure, Penny's number, she's drawing us a hundred ninety-five thousand in capital outlays, then we can, we can pull out the budget, put it over inheritance. You know, trick, pull the money out of inheritance, that's what we want to build those capital outlays and then just subtract that.
Yeah, um, but what, is that out of general?
That, that's everything. That's general fair. Okay, so you've got three sixty-two, that's my figure. That's where I think we're at. Hundred ninety-five up here, subtract that out, we're only a hundred and sixty-seven over. Then we've got to get also that as inheritance, so about three hundred and sixty thousand total that we can put down as possible transfer from the state, so make this one. About three sixty. That's better than we've done before.
It is, but if those capital outlays re rear their ugly noodle and we end up needing them, then it's a.
What we've said.
We could keep inheritance forever. I mean, it would be nice to think that.
Bye.
It may not always be there, but right now that's the only reserve we have.
Well, and that's the problem. If we're going to use inheritance to buy down the budget every year, if the inheritance disappears, what, what are we going to do?
What have we been doing? That's what we've been doing every year.
I know. But if inheritance goes away, then you're going to have to cut your budget down to.
But if we get lucky enough to not have to, not have to dip into it. I mean, just like we have in the last couple of years.
Right.
And it stays there, then.
As long as that's the case, I'm comfortable. But if we start using it.
Then we.
On have to's, like payroll and other things, it's going to be a recurrence every year, like one-time expenditures, whatever.
Right.
That you need something.
That's what I'm getting at.
But.
That's why I'm holding full capital outlay.
I know.
I'm asking for that. We've always, as long as I've been here, we've used that.
Yeah, I know.
And if inheritance goes away, um, I think everybody's convinced that we have to have replacement income.
Yeah, and you know why that failed, Penny? It's because the state is so damn far that, that they couldn't afford to give us those extra funds.
Well.
Like the vehicle taxes that I believe they weren't going to give it up. That's what failed.
The state of Nebraska is projecting a ninety-nine million dollar shortfall on their budget.
That's what I'm getting at. They couldn't give those funds up.
And they're making cuts to every level, every level.
And that's why they, that's why.
State Patrol, ten million.
And that's why they.
U N L.
Tax didn't, it take, it couldn't be approached for the same reasons. Cause everybody's saying, well, we said no, that laid the county, what do we do? We got a shortfall.
Well, all right, so we're meeting again on next Tuesday, the nineteenth.
Yeah.
At eight thirty. Yes, unless I have, I don't have my calendar events in front of me, but. Well, if I can't be here, you'll just chair the board and. Anyway, um, all right, very good. I'll need a motion in a second to adjourn. I got a motion from Dean, a second from Fritsch to adjourn at eleven oh five. If there's no further discussion, we'll go ahead and vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All the folks say nay, motion carries.